Okay. When Brian gets back.
Okay.
I'd like to call our city council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Something bit the dust over there? Roll please. Belkey.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Marquese.
Here.
Maciver. Shower.
Here.
Seifert.
Here.
Six present and one absent. We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. This is an opportunity for residents and anyone in the audience to address the council on any issues. They do not have to be issues that are on the agenda this evening. If you want to address the council, please come forward. And we have a three-minute limitation, please. You want to pull the microphone down to so you can speak into it?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Luanne Spiros. I live at 7521 Main Street. The reason for my visit today is really to recognize a number of our city leaders. Those individuals are Alderwoman Sylvia Maciver, Dan Gombach, Michael Griffith, as well as the Planning and Zoning Committee. Recently, there was a petition to rezone for special use the former Wolf Camera on 75th Street. A number of the community residents on Main Street, as well as Cambridge, were concerned. And so the city leaders that I referenced were very responsive to our requests for information. They're very educational in providing the information to us in a timely manner. And most importantly, acted in the best interest of the community in doing all that they did. So we just really wanted to say thank you. Thank you for your service and all that you do to make Darien a nice place to live. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, Luanne. Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council?
Hi, I'm Barbara Finnegan. I met earlier at six o'clock, and it sounded like we were discussing that a little bit. Just as a summary, I cannot speak for District 61, so I don't know anything about commenting on their position. As a parent, a group of us do believe it is a public safety issue on a city street and not the responsibility of a school district to make sure that the children can cross safely at a major intersection. And I just urge you to reconsider looking at this again and just keep in mind the safety of the children.
Barb, you-
And I discussed, we discussed it at length, so I don't need to get-
Yeah, Barb, you sent me an email, and I think Micah Stone, is Micah Stone in the audience also?
He's not, but-
Okay, both of your letters were exactly the same, so I owe you a response. So I will get that in the emails to you soon. Okay, thanks, Barbara.
All right, thank you.
Does anyone else want to address the council? It could be on any subject matter. Then let's move on to the next item on the agenda, the approval of the minutes of January 20th, 2014. Do I have a motion to approve Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Kenny? Any additions or deletions in the minutes? We didn't get that far in the meeting, I don't think we did. No comments? Okay, the roll, please. Shower.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Marquese.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent. The minutes have been approved. Receiving of communications, do any of the aldermen have communications to share? Alderman Kenny?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Received a communication from Janet Tongut, happens to work in on the office I'm at, with a concern, somebody had a concern and brought it to her attention regarding AutoZone in Brookhaven about auto repair. We brought, I brought that information to Mr. Gombach. He brought it to the chief. There were some emails going back and forth with Mr. Manos, the owner of Brookhaven. You want to kind of give a update?
Sure, what we recently did, and this is for the residents watching at home, it's been several calls that came into us over the last year of people that are changing, this is at the Brookhaven Plaza in front of AutoZone, is that people are changing their oil in the parking lots and/or doing potential brake jobs. Again, so what we did is we recently reached out to the manager of AutoZone, as well as Mr. John Manos, the owner of the plaza, and requested of them to educate their patrons, especially at AutoZone, and not to allow those things to happen. Obviously, when someone purchases, a consumer purchases something from AutoZone, it's no longer AutoZone's responsibility, it becomes John Manos's responsibility. Again, and I know what I have also witnessed in the past, and others have as well, is, for example, you might need a wiper. So what I've seen is the AutoZone representatives helping either residents or patrons to change a wiper, for example, or replace a bulb, even in some cases, a battery. Those really aren't car repairs, and again, staff had viewed that as AutoZone being friendly with the residents and their patrons and helping them out in those types of situations. Again, we do not allow, nor do we encourage, people to be changing their brakes and/or oil and other car parts in the parking lot at all. So we'll continue to monitor that along with the police departments. And is there really, one thing we need to take a look at is if there's codes that we can cite them on or it's something we're speaking with the police department with.
The one thing, I was in Brookhaven this morning, watching an individual, you know, popping the hood on a car, adding apparently, I thought it was antifreeze and windshield washer fluid. And when I got done, I walked up to where the car was at, and sure enough, there was antifreeze laying on the ground. So obviously, you know, someone's going to go into AutoZone, and they're not going to buy a funnel to put it in there, and we're going to get that on the ground too. So we may have to, you know, look at that as well, because if you get a resident who walks, happens to walk through that puddle, you know, oil, water, slip, fall-
Sure.
So then we may run into something else, even though it was a quick two minutes where the guy's pouring his fluid, but if, you know, the consumer's not careful about what they're doing, it becomes a liability for the shopping center and-
And that's a great point, because what I'll do tomorrow is try to stop back there and speak to the manager, and maybe they can provide their customers some type of paper funnels. Not that we're trying to encourage that, but at the same time-
Don't provide paper funnels so that they can go home and do this at their homes.
All right. You know, again, people are going to do what they want to do, especially when they leave the store. So trying to help prevent it, you know, we'll educate them not to do that. But again, you know, trying to be a little more proactive, as I refer to it as.
Thank you.
Any other communications? I received a number from, right on what Luanne had mentioned, we received an email from Joe Weber, who commended our staff, especially Mike Griffith, with providing all the information that they needed in a timely manner on the Wolf Camera rezoning issue. I also received an email from Chris Noel, expressing his thanks and appreciation for the great job that our staff does on snow removal. Also, Mike Minardi and Kathy Minardi sent us an email. Dan, you were copied on that with a thank you for how terrific our Public Works Department takes care of our streets. I'll present those for the record. Any other communications? Okay, let's move on to the mayor's report, and I have no report this evening. Moving on to the city clerk's report.
I have a couple of items, Madam Mayor. City offices will be closed on Monday, February 17th, in observance of President's Day. And there will be no city council meeting that evening. It is scheduled for Tuesday, February 18th. And also, on February 18th, we have meet and greet with the mayor. It's starting at 6:00 PM in the upstairs conference room.
It's also the night we have the cake and coffee for our 2014 Citizen of the Year, who happens to be John Poteraski this year. Let's move to the city administrators' report.
Thank you, Mayor Weaver. Just one item, a reminder to the council and the residents. Our budget season is right around the corner. On February 14th, I will send a draft budget to the city council for review. The council will start meeting on February 19th, which is a Wednesday, and then subsequent Tuesdays on the February 25th, March 4th, March 11th, and March 18th. Those are all Tuesday evenings at 6:30. We have identified for additional budget meetings. We typically have not used all of those, but we put those aside. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to the treasurer's report. Oh, I skipped right over to department heads. I think someone has a presentation for us. Chief?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Darien residents. Have a brief presentation for you. For two years now, we've been talking about burglaries to the motor vehicle and how the potential for us to interrupt burglaries to the motor vehicle exists. We are right now in the midst of a trending crime pattern involving burglaries to motor vehicles. The crime pattern is trending in the area between 67th Street, 79th Street, Cass Avenue, and Clarendon Hills Road. We've had 11 burglaries to the motor vehicle or attempts in that single area. Most of those are the result of vehicles that parked in driveways that have been left unlocked and with valuables visible and unattended. So I want to show you something briefly here.
Our burglaries to motor vehicles were down last year.
They were down 58% last year, but we started off with a bang this year. So we want to nip it in the bud as quickly as possible. The wood, as this video starts to roll, this is surveillance video. Up in the right-hand corner of your screen, you'll see a figure. This is not staged, this is an actual suspect on surveillance video. See, he tries the door handle and the rear gate on that pickup truck there.
He just goes right down the block.
Right. This is about 2:30 in the morning. Look how brazen this is.
Wearing a hoodie.
Well, wearing a hoodie, tries one door handle, locked, tries another door handle, locked, so he leaves. That's pretty much invisible, but I can't, I can't impress how important it is that our residents lock their doors, because the burglary to the motor vehicle is a crime of opportunity. And when we leave the doors open and we leave valuables in plain view, we just provide the opportunity for them to do it and get away with it. So we are exacting some specific preventive and proactive plans to interrupt this, and I can't discuss them now, but we are moving toward, but we really need the help of the citizenry here to lock the doors, keep your valuables out of plain view.
That's amazing. Can you disclose what block that was on?
Oh, ma'am. Oh, ma'am. But it was within the boundaries of-
That you just described, yeah.
Where the trend is occurring.
From Cass to-
Cass to Clarendon Hills.
Okay.
67th to 79th Street.
79th Street, you cross over, you cross over 75th all the way to 79th?
All the way to 79th.
Okay. So that encompasses Ward, that encompasses Ward 7, Ward 2, and Ward 4? Okay, those are the-
I sent out a memo last week to all the elected officials asking for some assistance and
Yes.
Email blast to the constituents, because we're continuing with our Clean Car Campaign, but this is such a critical issue that we have the opportunity to completely take the impetus away, because at 2:00 in the morning, if he breaks out somebody's window, somebody's going to hear it, and we're much more likely to catch him doing that. But if you can quietly open, unlock the door, the opportunity is very small. Large that he'll get away with it and small that we'll catch him.
So Chief, maybe I watch too much TV, okay? But when that gentleman, I'm assuming he's probably wearing gloves.
Yes.
Were we able to go out and see if we got prints off those door handles at all?
Actually, we didn't even get that till a couple of days later. So we weren't able to get any prints off of it. But for every burglary to the motor vehicle, we are in fact looking to process it as a crime scene and see what we can lift from it.
How do we come into contact with that video?
I can't discuss that.
Is that camera visible or is it hidden?
It's hidden.
Okay. I mean, if he's brave enough to ignore a camera.
He didn't, he wasn't aware that he was on tape.
Is this a camera, is this a camera that was installed by the police department? Or was it one that the resident had on their-
It was not installed by the police department. That's as much as I-
Okay, so it's one that's-
Do you think that having a camera, like a visible camera, would make a difference? Because I know I have a surveillance camera in front of my house.
I think it makes some difference, but it's not an absolute deterrent. But it does make some difference.
Of course, mine's because people mess with my Halloween decorations, not for my cars.
Okay. The training began, the council approved a firearm simulator to enhance our ability to, for our officers to defend themselves and for the city to defend us in the event of an officer-involved shooting. We took delivery on the firearm simulator, and tomorrow we begin a three-day training cycle with all of our range officers. They will be trained on the simulator and will begin using it. What I'd like to do is for the upcoming police committee meeting, I'd like to invite the police committee to try out the simulator. And ultimately, at your convenience, the entire council will be invited to shoot around with, act like cops for a few minutes anyway, so.
No, thanks.
Wanted to give a brief update on the school engagement piece. Last week, I met with the three district school superintendents and the principal at Our Lady of Peace. And the purpose of the meeting was to kind of get a feel for how we were doing up to this point in the school year and what we could do to further enhance the school engagement, whether we could get into for some more presentations and things like that. All the school superintendents told us that they were very happy with what our officers have been doing. They had some very good anecdotal stories about the officers interacting, both in the hallways and during lunchtimes with the kids. And so we're headed in the right direction, but we want to keep our fingers on the pulse to make sure that we're optimizing our engagement. I also had occasion to meet with Joan Olson from Robert Crown, and she indicated that she is working, her organization is working in tandem with most of the school superintendents, and they're making headway in ingraining the curriculum into the school's curriculum, so we're moving forward with that. Last week also, I had a meeting with all the community groups to begin our setup of the action subcommittees. And we have moved forward on domestic violence and East Indian Subcommittee with Chris Santi to help stem the burglaries that were occurring last year in the East Indian community, where the substantial amounts of jewelry were being taken. So those are underway. Chris is out of town for a few days, and then once he gets back, he'll be on the way with that. So that's about all I have tonight, so.
Very good. So those committees are just starting up, is what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. They're starting up now.
Okay.
Any questions?
A quick question on the school engagement. Have they asked the police department to do any programs at this point?
We've done two Botfins-style life skills presentations. Part of the problem is fitting, them fitting us into their schedule and what the best way to get that done is. And so one of the things that we talked about with the superintendents was the possibility of assemblies, joint classrooms, and things like that. But it's kind of up to their schedule. And the other thing that we're doing is we're creating a schedule for tabletop exercises by district for disaster preparedness. And so Jerry Pickley is taking the lead on that, and he'll be reaching out to each of the superintendents to set up, most likely on a professional development day, so that we can engage in an active tabletop exercise for disaster preparedness.
Okay. Okay, and for a tabletop, it would be strictly the teachers and management-
Yes.
Working together on how to deal with the-
How to function.
Yeah, it wouldn't be the children involved in-
No, no, no. Essentially, what happens is we create a scenario, bring folks to the table who would be in the decision-making or response-type capacity, and then have them act out or discuss what they would be doing. And then we do an after-action debriefing after it to find out what else we need to be doing and how differently we can manage it.
Very good.
Mayor Weaver, one question for the chief. I sent out your monthly report last week. You covered it, or at that last council meeting, you covered it. So we sent that out. I know we've been struggling for a long time on what, you know, the best method or the format for the report. And the last one the chief sent out is a combination of narrative to give the public an idea of what's happening and hopefully a better and more easy-to-read format, and also some statistics at the end. And that'll be out now once a month, chief.
Once a month.
And we'll send it to the council.
Yes.
And we'll put it on our website. And again, if there's any questions, always feel free to ask the chief.
And now, you haven't sent that out to the council yet?
Well, that one, we sent out for the last, for the, chief made the presentation, we hadn't sent it out yet. So we sent it out after that.
Okay, I'll have to go back to my emails to make sure I didn't miss it.
What the biggest issue is, is we do our data based on police periods. There are 13 police periods.
Okay, that's right.
And so sometimes they coincide exactly with the council meetings, and other times they don't.
I remember seeing it now, yeah.
Catch it someplace in between.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, chief.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Any other depart, go ahead, Dan.
Madam Mayor, just one quick note. Last week at the Municipal Services Committee, Alderman Marquese had brought up an issue that a resident brought up to him in regards to one of our roadways that we had resurfaced last year with some premature cracking. I did take a look at that. In this case, it was Creekside Heather Lane, more specifically. What we are noticing is that due to this year's frost conditions, that the roads are developing some longitudinal cracks. One thing that we also identified was Lamont Road was recently resurfaced, which is not our jurisdiction, between 83rd Street and 75th Street. And theirs is like a checkerboard. So we're looking at the mixed designs, our mixed designs that we're using have been going back probably 10 years or so, and excellent results in comparison to what was recently used, such as Lamont Road. So the bottom line is that we're going to be taking a closer look at what roads have cracked, to what degree, and we may have to add additional crack sealing into the budget this year. Again, we're looking at, we looked at the mixed designs, and according to the mixed designs, which are IDOT-approved, those are, those were verified, and they were the correct mixed designs. So it's just due to the weather this year.
Now, your bid opening is coming up soon?
Correct. We do have a bid opening, I believe it's Tuesday, so we'll take a look at-
I'll wait from tomorrow?
Tomorrow, I believe it is.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow, yes.
Okay, February 4th? Okay.
Dan-
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, we have, on the agenda tonight, we're going to be talking about purchasing of salts. And when that came on, I did my homework, and I was looking around some other communities. Downers Grove being one of them, paying $55 per ton for salt, and we're paying $68 a ton in salts. I know you have an explanation for that. Would you be willing to share that with us right now?
Sure. And let me back up a little bit. First of all, what Alderman Kenny is referring to is two different contracts for salt. The first is referred to as Central Management Services, which is a program through the Illinois Department of Transportation that basically does a joint bidding for municipalities, in this case, rock salt. The other portion of this is what we did the last couple of years, was go out to bid on our own with salt. In this particular case, this year, the salt pricing through the Central Management Services, or IDOT, was cheaper than what we're getting it for currently. And as Alderman Kenny had stated, Downers Grove is at $55 and some change, and we're at $68 and some change. Now, going back in 2008 and '09, for example, I was able to do a little quick history here. The city of Darien was under the CMS IDOT purchasing. We were paying $115 a ton, and Downers, in that case, was paying $59.25. So there was no rhyme or reason at that time of all these different pricings that were out there. We're right next door to each other. In conjunction with that, the following year, we were paying $74.87 in 2009-10, while some of our neighbors were paying $63 across the board there. Another example is in 2010-11, we were paying $74, again, through the state contract, and other towns were paying $63, $63, and there wasn't another town that was paying exactly what we were paying then. In 2011, that's when we built our salt dome, we went out and broke away from the IDOT Central Management Services joint requisition, and we ended up with a contract that cost us $66.60 per ton and where the neighbor, our Downers Grove, for example, was $63.24. Some of our other neighbors were at $74, almost $75. In 2012-13, again, we were at $68.60. We renegotiated the contract then, and some of our neighbors were anywhere from $63 all the way down to $50. This year, again, we're at $68.60, and Downers Grove is at 55. There's a couple other municipalities that were even lower than that. Now, there's one municipality that's out there. The way the Central Management Services works through IDOT is that, for example, if you have 1,000 tons, you have to order this 1,000 tons in April and commit to it. You're obligated to take it. If you do not take it, no matter what, you have to take it. That's the bottom line. But in this case, if you were to use up the full 1,000 tons at the end of the year, you can go basically 20% over, so you'd be able to get 1,200 tons. Once you've exhausted it, and if it's available, any additional salt that you may require, in this example, this town is going to be paying close to $75 a ton because they're above and beyond the Illinois State Purchase Contract. The beauty of our contract was that it gave us flexibility. First of all, we had a contract earlier in the year in May that was approved by the city council for two options. The first option was that we would take approximately 900 tons, and that would give us enough salt for what we typically use in a year, which is about 2,700 tons. So we had an inventory of the year prior to, and to add to this inventory, we just took what we would be required to have for the full year. That contract came in, or that option came and went. We exercised that. Whereas option two gave us the opportunity to get an additional, I want to say, was 1,600, 1,700 tons of salt, in which case, we ended up exercising that option, obviously due to the weather. We stand here today and before the city council this evening, we're asking for an additional $70,000 worth or 1,000 tons. And our goal was to be able to secure the salt and to have the city council authorization to spend the monies, but not necessarily spend it if we don't have to. So in other words, if there's a storm tomorrow evening, we will order 100 tons the following day, and so on and so forth. The weather forecast for the rest of February is that it's going to be a long and cold winter yet. So this extra tonnage that we're looking for this evening will get us through it. And then next year, we're going to take, not next year, come April, we're going to see what the market dictates. Is it better to go to state purchase, or is it better just to go, again, on a private contract like we did? It's really all over the place, but we know for a fact there's towns out there right now that are paying anywhere from, what I stated earlier, $75 a ton up to $140 per ton because they need the salt. Hopefully, I've answered that in a long explanation here, Alderman Kenny.
Thank you, sir.
Dan, you also explained to the committee the location of the salt, which was a benefit of the agreement of the contract.
Correct, right, that's a good point. Some of the, well, I should say, many of the barges or salt comes down the Mississippi River, which is through channels and barges. Now, there's cities out there that are waiting for the IDOT Central Management Services salt loads to come through these barges. They can't come through. The reason they can't, they're all frozen. We at North American, for example, this year, they have us slotted for the full allotments, which is 2,700 tons, I believe it was. In addition to that, we have also secured 30% additional if we need it, all at a locked-in price of $68.60. So are we paying a little more right now? The answer is yes. If we were part of an IDOT contract, we still may have been spending the same amount of monies, because we probably would have been out of salt by now. So it's really tough to determine, okay, do you go with securing with joint purchase or do you go out on your own?
But Dan, I'm sorry, American is located where?
Oh, North American, there's a couple different spots they have. I know one is right off of, I believe it's Lamont Road.
My point was that it's close, and we don't have to worry about the frozen Mississippi.
Yes, it's not on barges. It's right there now for us to go get.
It's there, we can get it delivered, right.
Yeah, that's the difference.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. Now we can move to the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 131418 in the amount of $548,262.67 from the listed fund and payroll for the period ended January 23rd, 2014, in the amount of $266,803. amount of two hundred sixty-six thousand, eight hundred three dollars and fifty cents, for a total to be approved of eight hundred fifteen thousand, sixty-six dollars and seventeen cents.
Do I have a motion to approve, Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Belkey, discussion? The role, please.
Seifert.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
You wanted to go over your report?
I also wanted to review with the council this evening, just quickly, we did have our police pension board meeting with the investment advisors last Wednesday, it reflects the period through December thirty-first, so, the numbers are looking fairly rosy, although after the last month, and especially today, so we're hoping these numbers hold up, but anyway, for the quarter, between the two investment advisors, we have approximately twenty-three million dollars invested in the police pension fund, and for the quarter, they've ranged in a return between three-point-two and four-point-three percent, just for the last three months, for the year-to-date, which they use the calendar year figures, one was just over nine percent, and one was just over eleven percent.
Awesome.
So our bogey, in terms of what our rate of return needs to be to really fully fund the pension fund, is seven percent, so, looking at December thirty-first, it was looking pretty good, I'm sure we've eaten into this somewhat now, but at least we have a little bit of cushion, but overall, we're very pleased with the results, especially when you consider we can do no more than fifty percent of the fund in equities, and fifty percent is in fixed income, and as everybody knows, fixed income is returning really next to nothing right now, but, very pleased with the overall performance, and I don't know if any of you have any more particular questions, or wanna see the booklets or anything they provide.
Mike, you know what, might help clarify a little bit, you're talking about the, the interest they made, but when they do future projections, they have a, an assumption number they use, so while it certainly helps the assets grow, it doesn't necessarily change the assumptions.
Well, that's correct, but they, they do not have an assumption as far as what the rate of return is, the actuary, annually, an outside independent actuary, will review the, our, basically our census, our number of employees, their ages, when they're likely to retire, what their payroll is, to determine what the exact amount is that we need to fund, and that's when we come to you as the council, and request that you levy that amount in taxes, to be levied against people's individual houses and their tax bills that go out next year, the actuary computes that amount, for the amount to be determined, so that we have the amount in the fund to fully fund the pensions of all the eligible employees over that period of time, and that's where I'm getting the seven percent, the amount that's currently being used is seven percent, the investment managers, their goal is to make as much as possible, if they can get a hundred percent, more than happy, and then our annual contribution would naturally be a little bit less.
Alderman Shower?
Mike, what was our year-to-date number, do you remember?
Our, our, our year-to-date for, through December.
You got it.
Between the two funds, one was nine-point-four-one percent, and the eleven, the other one, eleven-point-four percent, so on average of about just over ten percent between the two.
Gotcha.
That's terrific, very good, thank you, any other questions for the treasurer? Let's move on to standing committee reports, Alderman Marques.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to report that the minutes of the December sixteenth special meeting, and the December twenty-third regular meeting of the Municipal Services Committee were approved last Monday night, and submitted to the clerk's office for publication, and the next meeting of the Municipal Services Committee will be Monday, February twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen, at six-thirty here in the council chambers.
Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the minutes of the January sixth, twenty-fourteen admin finance meeting were submitted to the clerk's office, and our next admin finance meeting will be held at six PM on Monday, March third, in our upstairs meeting room.
Thank you, and Police Committee's not here, Chairman's not here this evening, okay, let's move on to questions, comments, agenda-related, do any of the aldermen have questions or comments on any of the items on the agenda this evening, for the viewing, for the residents that are here, we have a, a pre-council work session, where we discuss a lot, a number of these items, if there's questions by the aldermen, so, there, at times, it may appear that there is no discussion on the issues, many of these items have been discussed at the work session, just for your information, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the, the council on any of the items that are on the agenda this evening? Is it, is this on the agenda? Okay. Okay, we, we just, we had the opportunity for residents to speak earlier in the meeting, still, yeah, you'll have to wait to, you'll have to wait to the end of the meeting. Thank you. Let's move on to old business, and there being no old business, let's move on to the consent agenda, and if you've picked up the consent agenda this evening, you'll, you'll notice that it is quite lengthy, and I will read a few of these, but a, a number of these are, I will just group, just describe them as a group, item A under, uh, the consent agenda is a motion to approve the Hornet Hustle, and all of the, the, all of the activities in the, in the streets that are being closed off for the Hornet Hustle, which will be taking place on April twenty-seventh, item B is a motion to approve an ordinance rezoning certain property, which is the Patio Restaurant, item C is a motion to approve an ordinance approving a variation to the Darien Building Code for Abbey Woods Town Homes regarding their fire alarm connection requirements, items, item D through items Q-Q are resolutions to do, to accept prices from, from vendors who may or may not do business with the city of Darien over the, over the course of one year, our, our fiscal year, which is May first, two thousand fourteen through April thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, and most of these vendors are, provide services to our Public Works while they do projects within the city, so, if, do you think I have to read all of these? I, I don't think so, I think if you're really concerned about it, please go to our website or call Dan Gombach at City Hall to learn the names of all of our vendors and their, their prices, we, Public Works goes out and does this every year in advance, because they know there's gonna be a number of projects they'll be doing, like water main breaks, like, like our street services, street res servicing, so, we try to get bids in from these vendors and lock those bids in, which is a definite advantage for the city to have those prices approved upfront, item RR, under the consent agenda is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Season Comfort Corporation to remove and replace two furnaces in City Hall, and one furnace at the municipal service facility, at a cost not to exceed six thousand eight hundred thirty dollars. Do I have a motion to cons, to approve the consent agenda, Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Belkey? The role, please.
Marques.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The items have been approved, under new business, the first item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute the negotiated agreement between our Metropolitan Alliance of Police, Darien Police Civilian Employees, Chapter One Forty-seven, Unit B, our non-s sworn employees, do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Seifert? Discussion? The role, please.
Kenny.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent.
The motion has been approved, the next item B is motion to approve a resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by the municipality under our Illinois Highway Code, which is an authorization to buy additional rock salt, Alderman, uh...
Motion.
Motion made by Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak, discussion? I think we had a pretty lengthy explanation of how we arrived at this, at this price and this amount. The role, please.
Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Motion has been approved, there, we move on to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature, do any of the aldermen have any announcements, questions, comments at this point? Then I'll open it up to the floor, and if you would like to speak, do you wanna come up to the microphone, please, you might have to adjust that microphone down to, to, to reach you. Real down, yes, okay.
I'm a crossing guard by Eisenhower.
Your name, please?
Victoria Biddle.
Biddle?
Yes.
Yes.
And, everybody's worried about how, you know, it's gonna be wonderful, I, one of the men from, that's in charge of all that, he stood on my corner for two hours, and he told me how it was gonna be, no child is gonna be in danger crossing, they're gonna make it a path for the kids, no more, it's gonna be wonderful, fifteen years as a crossing guard in Darien, I think what, people are scared, they're afraid that the kids are gonna get across, they're not gonna get across, but, we're crossing guards, we don't let them go in the streets when there's a car coming, we wait for the light, if I'm not there, they do not leave, people are saying, go, go, they, they won't go, they'll stand and wait for me, but, I don't know why everybody's so afraid, all the mothers that I've heard, you know, I don't know why they're afraid, it's gonna be wonderful for the kids, they're, they're making that street there closed, and it's gonna be for the kids only, all the traffic is gonna be down Seventy-Fifth Street, and there's gonna have an opening there, where all the buses and the cars will go, no more of that other part, you know, where the cars go every day, it's not gonna be that way anymore, that's closed, that's where the kids are gonna walk every day.
You're talking about the entrance to Eisenhower?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's changing, yes.
Yeah, it's gonna be wonderful for the kids, I, I love, I love how it's gonna be, they're all gonna be safe, we have a good time, my kids don't even wanna go on the bus no more, I mean, they don't wanna, they come on the corner, they just, we have a good time, real good time, and that's what it's all about, we're not for the cars that go by, we're for the kids, excuse me, children, I worked at River Forest, I couldn't say kids, 'cause they're not goats, they're children, but, it's wonderful, I mean, that corner's gonna be really nice when they fix it, and it's not gonna be no danger, and we got a wonderful police department, we, we don't have to tell them, they know what's going on, we don't have to call them up and say, come and see a car, or this, they see it, I mean, I know the chief, he's, he's a wonderful person, I know, he's from Chicago, I know all the police, my husband was a Chicago policeman, I mean, he's a good, he's a good, but, I don't, I'm tired of the mothers going on the corner and, and saying to the other crossing guards, oh, how is our kids gonna get across, how is this, that's not gonna be no danger, I talked to the gentleman that's in charge of it all, he gave me his card, and I brought it in to his, I brought it in the station, his card, and I gave it to his secretary.
Okay.
You know, but, it's, it's gonna be wonderful.
Thank you, thank you.
There's not gonna be no trouble on that corner.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I want all these mothers to know, they're all scared, nothing to be scared, fifteen years with Darien, and twenty-five years with River Forest Crossing, North Avenue.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I had one clarification to make regarding the salt purchase that we did not mention earlier, I did have a couple of comments, some of you might have seen Dan on TV last, last week on the news, and somehow out of that, the, the, part of the story was to really show we had a, a lot of salt in our salt storage bin, and, and somehow that was a little bit twisted to say that we were out of salt, and I just wanted, Dan, maybe just take a second to let the residents know, what you're proposing now is proactive, but, we had not run out of salt, and we have a very good supply of salt.
Right, and just, I'll reiterate on Brian's point, last week, we were interviewed by Channel Seven, and for those of you that didn't see it, one of the questions was, how's our salt supply for the year, well, during the taking, or the interview process, certain things were said, in which case, then, I told them we had approximately enough salt for the next four to five storms, well, I think that got a little bit reinterpreted, if you wanna say, to where we had enough for the next two storms, we're almost out, but we have a lot more salt coming the following day, so the bottom line is that we were never in jeopardy of not having enough salt, and the salt that we're requesting for this evening is, again, to be proactive, and just to make sure that we're gonna have the supplies available to us in the event that we need to order additional salts.
The press actually changing thing?
It was hard to believe, I couldn't believe it, yeah.
Honest to goodness.
So I can't wait to see Ben next time, but...
Thank you, yeah, anyone else in the audience wanted to speak to the city council?
I'm John Collyough, I represent Patio Restaurants.
Oh, hi, John.
I just wanna say thank you to everyone for being so understanding with our new addition for the parking lot, and I hope we can continue a good relationship as we have for the last twenty-three, twenty-four years.
That's right, long time.
Thank you, and...
Good luck.
Good luck, yes, thank you. Any other, anyone else want to address the city council? Okay, I, you know... I, you know what, I think, I think Alderman Belkey was, was waiting for...
Yeah, I was waiting for anybody to bring that up.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Stacy Tantillo, seventy-three oh one Bunker Road, at the January twentieth meeting, I brought up the issue of the crossing guard, so, let's talk, what happened? Was there a discussion?
No, no, there wasn't, there, we were in the process of getting opinions around the table during our work session, and we ran out of time, so, I, I would like to leave it open to anyone, I, I think we heard from Alderman Shower and Alderman Seifert during the work session, we know where Alderman McIver stands, you know, the, what's troubling to us is, we made our decision, okay, actually, we've made it, we made our decision over two years ago. And, and what's bothering us is that it keeps coming back to us, and, and the motivation is bothering us, I have to be honest with you, okay, so, there was no decision made, we, we are leaving it open to any of the aldermen to address it this evening, give it, giving their opinions, but, one thing I, I found out, I, I've learned, is that bus, bus service is available for all children.
Correct.
So, the individuals that are walking are choosing to walk.
Correct.
Okay. That's not, no, that's...
They've opened it up.
At this point, you're saying it's not offered?
Alderman, excuse me, but Superintendent Carlo has informed us that all children have the avail, have busing service available.
That was discussed at the superintendent's, that was discussed at the superintendent's advisory committee, he did say that they were opening it up. No, because they've been battling this around for two years now, I, I'm not lambasting our district, I'm not lambasting our city council, I think this is something that should have been taken care of a long time ago, whether it's going to be paid for, whether there's gonna be a crossing guard or not, I just, it's a safety issue, it is a public safety issue, if our district decides to open up the buses to all students, that's great, um, I guess my thing is, is that it, it came as a surprise to us, and it shouldn't have been.
Yeah.
So, that, that's my issue for it, and now with the oncoming construction, and the refer, the reformation of the streets, what's it gonna be like, and then there's also that issue of just that one month and change of the time that there will not be a crossing guard towards the end of the school year, is also an issue, so, we are going to another superintendent's advisory committee tomorrow evening, we'd just like to have some information to go back there to, if there's any to be had.
There, there is no immediate decision that will be made, for sure, okay, that would, would, you would be able to take a message back to that advisory meeting, coming from this meeting tonight?
Okay.
No, but, is there anyone else that wanted to address their, their opinions on the issue?
You know, I...
Have they saved the memo from Mr. DeCarlo, Mr. DeCarlo?
The email?
In the packet.
The email...
They, they've seen it, then?
Yeah, the email was presented to the Administrative Finance Committee in their packet, so it was on our website, yes.
Because it does imply that the bus service is provided.
Yeah.
And it doesn't sound like they're in agreement whether it is...
There's some, yeah, there's some residents here that don't know that, yeah.
Well, that's why, I didn't know if it was beneficial for them to hear that letter from Mr. DeCarlo, or not.
No, I was, I, I took it to understand that they meant that the bus service was opening up, there was a one-mile radius law at one point, but now, with the oncoming of the discontinuation of the crossing guards, bus service would be opened up.
Stacy, that's, that was always my understanding, that they had, they had a, a one-mile... they had a, a one-mile radius, that they were expecting the children to walk. That's what I always understood. And then all of a sudden, I've, I've heard, "No, that's not true." Uh, Superintendent Carlo is saying, "No, busing service is available to all the students."
I'm not gonna speak for superintendent.
Well, that's, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of missing, there's something missing here. And for us, it's so difficult to have this keep getting thrown back to us by, by residents that are very, that you care, we understand that. We understand that. We think there's a lot of phobias out there, honestly. When we discussed how many students in a week are at all of those intersections, you know, a hundred and twelve at the most, and most of those are repeats, obviously, for kids coming and going. But, you know, that's not a large group of, of, of children going through those intersections. So it's troubling that, uh, this has become such a huge issue. And I mean, my God, we're, the, the, the sky is falling. And, and I'm just really troubled by the fact that the school board is getting people to come back to us after we've already made our decision. And if anyone else wants to, to add any more information, I'd appreciate that.
And I don't think at any time the city of Darien said that we were, didn't wanna see crossing guards on the corner. I think that the city of Darien said we should not be paying for it if District Sixty-six isn't paying for crossing guards, if District Sixty, Sixty-three's not paying for crossing guards. This issue was, I've said in the audience, long before I decided to run for Alderman, and they were talking about this issue. And the fact that you waited till I got in the seat to make a decision on it, I'm sorry if I voted the way you don't want me to vote, but I'm looking at the Sixty-one's budget here and I can't, I can't make it out. I'm looking at transportation budgets. One line shows a deficit, one line shows an estimated fund balance of one million eighty-three thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars. So, why can't they pick up the twenty-four thousand dollars if they're showing, if they're showing an estimated fund balance? Why should it come to the city of Darien? If you look at our agenda tonight, we have double Rs of things that we have to take care of as a city. And we cut, you know, sharpen our pencils and take a look at every little penny that's spent. That's why we need twenty-four thousand dollars, you know, so that we can go ahead and get, so we can go ahead and get salt when we need it. So we can go ahead and get the ditch roads projects. So we can put out an extra police officer to do some surveillance, so they can stop breaking into cars. So it's not that we're just trying to take twenty-four thousand dollars and put it in the bank and leave it. I think we owe, uh, you know, there is a handful of residents in the city of Darien, but we also have twenty, twenty-one thousand other residents that depend on us to be fiscally responsible for what we're doing. Whether you, you put a child on a bus or you, you have Andy Frame pay for it, I wanna see the kids get there safe. I live, my ward is right there with Lace and Eisenhower, and I get it. But to keep kicking this down the road and, you know, playing a political game, I think is irresponsible.
Alderman Kenny, nobody's playing a political game. I'd be very careful in your wording, sir.
No, ma'am, what I'm, what I'm saying is that you sit back and you, you, the city council made a decision a year ago. Okay? And then a year comes by, and I, and I don't mean politically, like the, the vote, the voting box on election day. I mean, I think there's some, I think there's some games that are going back and forth between, between both sides. And forgive me if that's how that came across, but that's, that's how I see it from the seat I'm sitting in.
We understand the timeframe of all this. And unfortunately, the ball got tossed into the court of parents, and not even just parents. There were other people at this advisory committee that don't have students at the schools who found it concerning. It's, it's just, it seems that there's a lack of communication from what I'm gathering between District Sixty-one and the city council. And I find that disheartening because I would think.
Stacy, the only lack of communication is coming from the school district. We have communicated over and over and over again, forgive me, but we have, we have done our due diligence.
I just, Stacy, and I, I just find it hard to know that a year ago, going on a year ago, we said, "Hey, we're phasing, we're phasing this out. We are hiring Andy Frame, we have a contract with him for twenty-four thousand dollars. The contract goes from now until April thirtieth. Please, you know, do what you have to do." And then here we are, talking about it again, so.
Believe me, there are many things with our district that I can find fault with. They're not the most fluid and forthcoming. And hopefully, as citizens and concerned citizens, we can rectify that situation. I think a lot more eyes are being opened with this issue. And so hopefully, we can get our district to be more communicative, um, responsive, open, more trusting.
Transparent.
Transparent. So, that's.
Thanks, Stacy. Yes, Alderman Belkey, yes.
I just wanna add a little background to this as well. Um, when we had this vote back a year ago, or when the new council members came in and this did not pass where the city would fund this, I did reach out to the District Sixty-one. I, you know, wanted to offer any kind of support I could and I showed up at the budget meetings and I was, the intent was to try to help and understand that, so maybe I can offer a way to kinda offset that, that amount. It wasn't an easy task. And, uh, so, again, it just left me with, "Hey, I'm here if you need me, you know, I'm here to support." I, I can certainly see where the other Aldermen are sitting on a matter of principle that, you know, they shouldn't have to revisit, and I get that. I was gonna be more open and just say, you know, I, obviously, you're the, you're the innocent one because back in the day when this was all going on, you know, we didn't have the residents like we are, like we have today. We had the board that, that came and, and, you know, were concerned. So it's unfortunate that you didn't get that opportunity back then. That's why I came to this and said, "Well, I'm, I'm open to," you know, I'm still open, but, you know, I understand on a matter of principle, it's, I can see that.
There are quite a few of us that feel like we've been played, to be perfectly honest with you. We went to the superintendent's advisory committee and, you know, I don't know, go talk to the city, find out why they did away with it.
That's what I was afraid of, yeah.
And there are a few of us that feel kinda like schmucks. But I'm a schmuck who will get up here and say what I need to say.
Stacy, we don't consider you schmucks. We do not consider you that way at all.
My hands off you for being standing there.
Yes, we do not.
We're all concerned and, you know, I don't, I've never been from the approach of them versus us. We're all the city. And it's just an unfortunate chain of events. And, you know, I hope that we can all learn from this, whichever way, you know, it sounds like it's, it's going not in your favor. But, you know, hopefully, we can all work, work through it, so, you know, the kids remain safe and, and we deal with what we have to deal with.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Just wanna add one thing, cuz you weren't here for the work session. And I don't know what the district did on their end. And I voted against eliminating the funding for crossing guards because of the safety issue. Uh, we had the last city council discusses at length, it actually started on a police committee meeting, where we discussed it, I think, two or three separate times. And we actually got the school district involved at that point, and that was two years ago. The old city council outvoted, voted against keeping the funding.
Correct.
Um, the new city council voted against keeping the funding. So, again, I'm not saying the district did something or did not do something, but certainly, I think from stand, where we're standing, I don't, I'm not sure we could've talked about this issue anymore than we did. So, just, you need to know that we certainly did our homework and there was people, both the last city council and this city council, that fought for keeping it. And unfortunately, it didn't come through. So, again, I don't know what they did, but I certainly know that we did, we spent a lot of time on this issue. And I think we gave it a very well hearing from all aspects.
Thank you. Who could I get the timeline from? When this started to now?
Can you develop that for Stacy?
Yeah, we, we put a, a timeline together in most of our packets that went to the council for this discussion.
Okay.
And I know, um, some residents have mentioned that they were able to follow the city council through all of these discussions. But if you'd like to give me a call or an email tomorrow, I could send you, you know, something specific. I'll take maybe the, a couple of the, um, emails that went out. But there's one specific that I know that, um, I don't know if it's an Excel spreadsheet or a Word document, but really took, uh, listed a lot of, of the events from the start of the conversation at the police committee till basically up to date.
Okay.
If a resident goes to our website and then they can go into the search box on the upper left-hand corner and then type in crossing guards, then they can do their own homework as well with that too.
Okay.
Okay?
But Stacy, give, give Brian a call or?
I'll give you my card.
Yeah, yeah, give her, give you a card.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, me again, Barbara Finnigan. And yes, that crossing guard, that's how I got all of my information from the police commen, the commu, police committee two years ago, it's on that. But I wanna address something you had said, um, Mayor Weaver, is that the district has not sent us here. In fact, in his adminis, in the advisory committee, he goes, "I cannot have you guys, I'm not advocating storming City Hall." So, I am personally not being sent by the district. I am a parent who unfortunately wasn't aware of this through my own fault, um, until the last month or so. And now I'm asserting my right to my opinion and how, again, a city, street, county, but we addressed that earlier and things. School zone, not school property. The school should not be responsible, nor, no student, no district school should be responsible for their children walking to school, not on school property. I believe that goes under the big umbrella of public safety. Kids crossing the street, you know there's gonna be a hundred or so of those a week in the dead of winter. So, we know spring, fall, there're gonna be a lot more. You're gonna have a lot of children age, you know, from third grade to eighth grade trying to make those decisions. We know it's only gonna get worse, um, during construction. And we have yet to see how they fix those or make them safer come after construction. So my immediate concern is during construction and through, at least November, when they have the construction finished. At that time, if it's a matter of, oh, everything has gotten great, as suggested, as if it's gonna be perfect, then maybe we'll come back here and maybe you won't see me again. Okay? So I don't know if this is, is this done with? Are you, we, I know I had gone to the meeting earlier and they said it might be open to ask the other Aldermen if they wanted to talk about this again at the Administrative Finance Committee meeting.
Well, we did make it around the whole table.
Yeah, who didn't?
Yeah.
So is that done?
Alderman Belsek?
Well, uh, I was in the minority and also voted that we, we keep the crossing guards and the city keep paying for it. And, um, I, I do agree with some of the speakers today in, well, first of all, I, I am disappointed in District Sixty-one not following through or doing anything for May when we made the vote until now, at the very least. That said, the fact that our budget happens to end April thirtieth and the school year ends June tenth is a little disconcerting to me. I don't, I think we have a moral obligation to continue at least through the school year. And I know that's something we can talk about when we do our budget and we can say, "Let's budget it for the month of May and June." And that's something that I'd like to see us do. That's just my opinion right now.
Okay, and I think Alderman Marquez, we haven't heard from you.
As I stated upstairs, I, I feel that District Sixty-one's put us in a very uncomfortable position. And while I know they didn't send you through their, um, failure to communicate this to parents like yourself that this was an issue, when they've known for two years that this has been a discussion, I think is a failure on their part. It's almost as if they're, it's almost as if they're saying, "We're playing cards here and we're gonna wait to, we see what you play before we play our cards." And I don't play, I like to play games like that with public safety or with children. You know, I'm, I'm a retired high school administrator. And I, I, children are my concern. And I don't think, as I told you upstairs, I don't think anybody here doesn't want those children to be safe. We all are concerned about those children being safe. We all know what that intersection is like. At the same time, I have a real issue with what we went through. As Alderman Cypher said, we, we discussed this ad nauseam before, before the new council came and after the new council came. And they were part of some of those meetings, they were here. Dr. Carlo sat here and heard some of that. So they knew what we were talking about. Mr. Van has had communications with them, both on the phone and I think written communication. So, I feel that they haven't done their job. And I feel our communication's been good. I'm concerned about the safety of the children, but I wouldn't change the vote that I had last year.
And yours is due to equitableness, is that, that you're?
Well, I had a lot of residents, I had a lot of residents last year when this, this was such an issue last year. And I'm surprised people in Sixty-one didn't know more about it because I had a lot of residents in District Sixty-three who are in my area who were, the articles were in the newspaper that we were talking about it. And they were sending me, you know, outrage that their tax money was going to pay for District Sixty-one children to be cross Seventy-Fifteen CAS when their school district was paying for their children to be bused to school and that was their taxpayer dollars going to that. So that was the context. They, not that they were saying they didn't care about the safety of your children at Seventy-Fifteen CAS, they were saying, "We dealt with this issue as District Sixty-three parents. And we dealt with it in such a way that I, we know our children are gonna be bused to the school. We dealt with it. Why can't they deal with it? Why can't that school district deal with it if District Sixty-three can deal with it?" And that's what they were telling me. And that was one of the reasons I voted the way I voted last year, based on that.
Okay, but I, I wanna make a, a statement that I feel comparing the safe, the, the intersections, the in-school zone crossings that are for Sixty-three and Sixty-six are not in the same danger level as the school zones of Sixty-one. You don't have.
Yeah, we're not arguing that point. We're not arguing that point. We, as you mentioned, this is an equity issue.
Right, but, again, we discussed this upstairs as well. I mean, all your, your tax money that you pay doesn't always just go to what you want. I mean, people, we fix roads and, and sidewalks. I don't have sidewalks, but I pay for other people's sidewalks, fine. That's what the city has to decide. But I'm not gonna come here and saying, "I don't think you should spend my money fixing the repairs on that sidewalk. I don't have sidewalks, why should I pay for that? My mother-in-law doesn't, doesn't drive in the winter. She has, still pays for the snowplows to go down the street." So, the idea that you can determine what you don't wanna have to pay for in taxes because it doesn't affect you, uh, to me is not valid. The bottom line is safety.
Let's, I tried to explain, there's, her ditches are my, are my curb and gutter. I mean, when you fix my curb and gutter, she doesn't have curb and gutter. She has a lot of ditches and culverts in her ward. We accept the fact that we, city owns those, so the city has to repair those. City owns our curb and gutter, so the city has to repair those. But we're, now we're talking about three different entities within the city of Darien which have a responsibility and taken responsibility to take care of, and is, two of them have taken care of that issue by busing their children to the schools. So that, I see it as a totally different issue. When you pay your taxes for the city of Darien, you understand that while you don't have sidewalks, some people do. But you may have issues in your ward that get addressed because the city owns that property and has a responsibility to fix that property as well. So I don't see the, the issue with the school and the tax dollar is the same as, as this, as that.
Barbara, thank you.
Thank you. So, okay.
Did you have, you haven't?
I already spoke.
No.
So, did everybody speak?
Yeah.
It sounds like the majority is a no, not opening it up again? Is that the majority?
I think Alderman Belsek was the only one that wanted to.
I was open.
Yeah. And you're open? Okay, we have two.
And Alderman Kenny, I know you were thinking of that upstairs.
I'd be open to look, I'd be open to relook at it if we can make sense of, I'm looking at their transportation, their transportation budget. And, and I, I would, you know, have encouraged Sixty-one to come to us and say, "Listen, here's, here's our budget, here's what it's laying out." I'd be open to the communication. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, you know, unreasonable. But when I'm, I'm looking at numbers that just, you know, there is, they do have a, a transportation budget.
But from a, from my perspective, it, it doesn't even matter. District Sixty-one has nothing to do with it. It's the, it's a umbrella of safety that the city should provide for children in a crossing zone. Whether, any, anybody who wants to walk at that time, when you know there's gonna be a, a large amount of people, small people, children, in a dangerous intersection in a school zone, regardless of whether they can afford it or not, I still think it's the, the city's responsibility.
But I, I think that even if there's some opening there, it's, it's not intended as a long-term thing anyway. So, if your, if your issue is safety, it's, you're not gonna get the long-term from this council. The only thing you may get from opening it is to either finish that one month and maybe in the budget, but I, I can't speak that even, that far.
And maybe through construction? You know, if it's not gonna be done till November, you still have September, October, November.
I just don't think the whole argument will be, you know, long-term anyway. I mean, I don't, I just don't see it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Was there anyone else in the audience that wanted to speak to the, any?